I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on November 5th. It's 4:00 PM. I also like to acknowledge that Councilmember Vasquez is excused tonight. And Councilmember Stedman is attending remotely. With that, if you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
I know parking's been really difficult out there. It's one of the, it's one of the reasons why we moved tonight's meeting up a little bit early because we knew that the voting center is next door. It's the first time that we have our voting center at the library. So we, we knew today was going to be difficult. We didn't quite know it was going to be this difficult for parking, but we, we knew it was going to be an issue.
I also want to acknowledge that we, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Squawks Indian Tribe. And we acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today who were absorbed or relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek as the traditional stewards of this land since time immemorial and their roles today in taking care of these lands in perpetuity. We recognize that, recognize and have the responsibility to call attention to the history of disposition, forced removal, and breach treaty rights that allow our nation, state, and city to develop as they have today. And we recommend that the community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of 1854. And also hoping we can get a motion to approve the amended agenda and consent agenda. We are amending the agenda tonight to remove the executive session.
Move to approve the amended agenda and consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries. We have approved our amended agenda. And first up on our amended agendas are public recognitions and presentations. The Native American Indigenous Heritage Month is one of the reasons why I read the full land acknowledgement this evening. We'll get started with Councilmember Dunning.
City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas since time immemorial, Native Americans, Alaskan natives, Native Hawaiians, and indigenous peoples have built vibrant and diverse cultures safeguarding land, language, spirit, knowledge, and tradition across generations and?
Whereas indigenous people have played a vital role in every stage of our nation's history, and their contributions have enhanced the social, political, environmental, and economic well-being of the United States of America and local communities like Lacey and?
I have to apologize, Mayor. My, my, it's not loading up right now.
Whereas we acknowledge the indigenous people who called this land home before the arrival of settlers and have been here since time immemorial and?
Whereas the city would like to recognize that we are on the lands of the tribal people of the Medicine Creek Treaty and other indigenous communities and acknowledge the history of dispossession that allowed for the growth of our community and?
Whereas the city offers respect to the tribal people of the Medicine Creek Treaty and their elders, past, present, and emerging, as well as all indigenous communities in Thurston County, Washington State, and across the nation and?
Whereas our community reaffirms its commitment to respect and preserve the traditions and culture and to honor their unique heritage of our first inhabitants. Now therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2024 as Native American Indigenous Heritage Month in the City of Lacey. I encourage all community members to commemorate this month with appropriate programs and activities, signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this date, November 5th, 2024. And we will make sure we get this proclamation to the tribe.
So next up on our agenda is a public comment. We have several people who signed up for public comments. I'll first call up Nancy. If you can come up and?
It's supposed to be here, right?
Yep. Please introduce yourself, explain where you're from, and you'll have a timer of three minutes to keep your comments, three minutes. Go ahead.
My name is Nancy Shorn, and I live at the Reserve of Lacey, Reserve at Lacey. And I am, I represent the Tenant Association of the Reserve at Lacey. And I'm kind of like, they keep calling me the head honcho, but I really don't want to be, anyway. Thank you for having us. We attended a meeting with Northwest Justice Project two Saturdays ago, and it was about tenants' rights in Washington State. And they handed out this flyer that you all have just been received. And it's mostly for Olympia renters, and we were asking them how we would go about getting something for Lacey. And they said, oh, that's really easy. Just go to your city council meeting. The Reserve at Lacey is a restricted tax, tax credit, low-income senior citizen property. Rents are decided by the Washington State Housing Financial Commission. And the City of Olympia has adopted these rules and respectfully requests the City of Lacey consider adopting something similar. And the reasons being, we have 200 and some odd people living at the Reserve at Lacey, and each person gets told a different thing on any given day. There are certain people who are in the good bunch and some of us that aren't in the stay away group. So the limits to what fees or deposits may be charged by your landlord. At move-in, we are required to pay a deposit of the last month's rent, but we were told that it was a non-refundable deposit. The deposits of up to 25% of one month's rent refundable can be paid in three installments. We have to pay $300 upfront, and most people have to pay at least $25 or $30 a month rent, unless you have a service dog or unless you have a emotional support animal. Late payments, if you're late even one day on rent, even, doesn't matter if you have any kind of a excuse or anything, it's an automatic $100, no questions asked. They won't even listen to you if you try to talk to them. Utility charges, the landlord, we don't even see a bill until someplace down in Killian, Texas sends us a bill and requires us to have it paid within, I think it's five days, five or six days. So we have no idea how to budget our budget because we, we have no physical, they don't give us anything. And then jumping down to longer notice for rent increases over certain amounts.
I'm sorry, you've reached the end of your public comment and we'll?
Okay, well, she can continue.
We'll have to have someone continue, yes.
She can continue. Go ahead, Ann.
Yeah, I'll let you go, go next. Ann, please introduce yourself.
I'm Ann Walsh from the Reserve. And to pick up where Nancy left off, we live somewhat in fear there. The other day, I'll give you an example. I saw a woman smoking, and I thought to report it, but then I remembered they have a policy, if you make a complaint about another resident, they have to tell that resident who made the complaint. I've never heard of such a thing. I mean, it just is a good way of keeping people from complaining because you're afraid. I was afraid to make a complaint. I have a friend there whose car was vandalized because she complained about something, and the woman who she complained about, we think vandalized the car. But on a better note, I attended this meeting that Nancy discussed in Olympia, and I also am a volunteer at the Lacey Museum. So I have learned a lot about the history of Lacey, and I'm very appreciative of what a young city it still is and why I think that it's important we catch up and get rights for the renters that are here in this wonderful place to live, where in the 70s, there were 7,000 employee, residents, and now there's over 51,000 residents.
60,000, actually.
Oh, 60, you've updated me, thank you very much. So, but that's an idea of how fast this city has grown. So we're hoping very much that you will support us with rights for renters.
And Dale, do you want to go next? Well, okay. Then next up is John.
Good evening, Mayor Ryder, members of the council. My name is John Jaygix. I am no longer a resident of the City of Lacey. I have moved to the City of Tumwater by way of Steamboat Island Road, but I still live in Thurston County. And I was attracted back to the Lacey Historical Society following the COVID. And we have been in the process for the last 18 months of revitalizing the organization, which had, because of a number of reasons, but the COVID being the last straw, things were declining. Last 18 months, we have really reinvigorated the, the group and are engaging in figuring out what we want to, what we should be doing. Just this last month, the 12-member board chose two priority projects, one of which is to memorialize a significant figure in Lacey's history, Dr. William A. Ehlers, who was our first physician in the 1950s, arriving here from somewhere in Texas, for God's sake, and basically became a beloved and significant contributor to the growth of the city, both as a city, but also to its individual citizens. As, it's kind of interesting, in the statement you made this morning, or at the beginning of the meeting, you mentioned the Nisquallys. One of the attributes of Dr. Ehlers was he reached out as a new physician in the area and didn't see the boundary, because there was no Lacey boundary, and included the Nisqually Tribal members as part of his constituency. We'd like to memorialize him when we have a proposal before the society to build a statue. We're deciding right now whether to do the traditional bronze statue, or we got introduced to the capacities of the Lacey Maker Space. And so we're investigating this new high-tech stuff that none of us understand, but the younger people there at the facility do. But in making that choice, one of the considerations is going to be where it's going to be. If it's outside, it would be fine to be a bronze statue, but if we want to use this new technology, we're looking for an indoor space, and that's why we're here, is to let you know what we're doing. And we'd like to ask if you could put on a future agenda, consideration of whatever the process is these days for seeking approval to place this piece of public art, which we intend to contribute when it's done. But when it is done, to put it at the Lacey Community Center, a very high-traffic area where people can see it. And then ultimately, when the museum, the new museum is built, we intend to donate it and then bring back to you the question of where you, where it's best to have it permanently. So that's basically what I'm here today, is just to say, hey, we're here. We'd like to get on your agenda in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up is Cheryl.
Don't start yet, I'm not ready.
Okay.
I have a pack of it, of information. Somebody might need to copy it, what's inside of it first.
Oh, yeah, sure. Go ahead, no, hold on to it.
Okey-dokey. Okay. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Cheryl Mokvis, and I'm here to request your support to acknowledge an early neighborhood of 1950, before Lacey was even a city, with a commemorative sign. The property is now multi-care clinic, parking lot. And when I saw this was going in, I was really worried about what was going to happen to the development that it used to be and the street that goes through the middle of the development when it was first made, which is called Selma Street. In 1947, Buster and Selma Popkiss purchased that particular piece of property with a loan. And in 1949, the loan was paid in full. And in 1950, they platted and made Popkiss subdivision on the land with 13 lots and road in the middle. The road became Selma in honor of Buster's wife. So what to do? How can this piece of history be noted somewhere? So I went to the Lacey Historical Society last November 23rd, and they were really great about helping me trundle along the road about how to preserve this history. In December last year of 2023, John and I met with Will Calicot from the Multi Care Thurston County, and he's the leader for their marketing, and talked to him about the history of the subdivision and Selma Street and our current concerns about wanting to preserve this piece of history. He thought that recognition was in order. In December also, I went to the Lacey Historical Commission to ask for help. The commission was in favor of recognizing the request, and it went to various departments in the city. The Lacey Historical Society, the Lacey Commission have both endorsed recognition of the Popkiss subdivision and Selma Street. So now I am here to ask you to place on an agenda at your earliest opportunity to please support a commemorative sign at the intersection of Selma and Pacific to recognize this historic neighborhood. Perhaps a sign that says Popkiss subdivision, 1950, something like that, but it's a part of Lacey's history that should be noted. I'm leaving a packet of information about the Popkiss, letters of support, and pictures. I'm willing to meet with you individually or together to add any other information that you might like to know. I lived next door to the Popkiss from 1972 to 1994, great neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council tonight? I do want to give the council a heads up. I met with John, was it earlier this week, last week?
Not yesterday.
It wasn't yesterday. It was at some point I've met with John, last Wednesday, I met with John to go over a couple of these requests. And I've, I've talked to our city manager, and we're gonna go forward with updating the council, probably a future work session about some of the requests of the Historic Society. These are two of them, and we will inform the council at that time, but we're gonna, there's, there's some other information that we discussed as well. So I look forward to updating the council about our conversation. And thank you, John, and thank you for coming forward about these.
But click, there are two other members of the Historical Society here.
Please introduce yourself. Yeah, okay. Oh, John. Yep, great, thank you. Okay. Next up is our public hearing, our 2025 revenue hearing, which I'm gonna open right now. Turn it over to Troy. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good, good afternoon, council. We are here today to conduct the first of three different public hearings that are required by state law. This particular hearing focuses on revenue sources, and we are required to conduct this hearing before the council approves next year's property tax levy. The council is scheduled to adopt property tax levies at the next meeting on November 19th. And I'll give Shannon a moment here. Okay, excellent, thank you. So you have here on the screen the proposed 2025 revenue sources for the general fund in comparison to the 2024 budget. So for 2025, total revenues for the general fund are projected at $78,282,984. This is about 19.4 million less than this current year. The main reason is due to the less use of reserves in the general fund. Of course, we took those reserves and we're putting those towards the new police station and training facilities. So those same uses of reserves are not occurring in 2025. I do have slides here behind it, we'll kind of go into some of these variances in more detail. Here is a slide that illustrates the same information, but in graph form. You know, when I look at this, I kind of look at tax revenues. These are things I think our citizens are most interested in. So if you look at property tax, sales tax, utility tax, and other taxes, that adds up to 54%. This is actually lower than what we've seen historically. Historically, it's been somewhere around 60% of all revenue sources come from taxes. The main reason we see this little bit lower is we're using a little more reserves this year, and that comes in the all-other category there you see on the top left, 25%. Also, what's interesting is service fees at 16%. These represent the fees that are directly paid for services received. So you could see that when you think about general fund services, most of it is funded through taxes. So there isn't a direct correlation between what's paid and the service, but that's, that's very normal in terms of city operations. We are here tonight to really focus on property tax, so I do have a few slides that will help us navigate what's going to happen with property tax next year. I'm here again, you could see the 24 comparison to what's projected for 2025. So total property taxes that are projected for the city next year are about 9.6 million. This consists of, one, the general levy, which helps pay for many of our services, as well as our last remaining voter-approved bond levy. So again, total of 9.6 million. This is an increase of about $447,000 compared to this year, most of that coming from the general levy. Here is a breakout of the change to property tax. So we, of course, start with this year's property tax levy of $8,828,000. We have three different areas that's, that are impacting property taxes for next year. First is new construction. That increase is 209,000. This is generated by new prop, new properties that are going on to the tax rolls. This is not subject to the 1% limit. I will point out, this is slightly lower than what was presented to you in the city manager's budget presentation just a couple of weeks ago. We do have a slight decrease to new construction since that time, but new construction is still very healthy. The new construction addition for this year is just over 288 million. We also have included in this increase the 1% revenue limit of $88,282. That's a simple 1% calculation on this year's levy. What's also new from the city manager's presentation is the refund levy. This year's refund levy is $147,167 for a total general levy of $9,272,934. As always, I do like to show a little bit of history, just for some perspective in our, in our property tax levy. This table here illustrates the last 10 years. We had, actually going back to 2014, we had 10 straight years of property growth or valuation growth. So from 2014 through 2013, we had property values increasing through that period, which means the levy rate itself goes down. So there's an inverse relationship with that. So you could really see that illustrated in the general levy, which is the, the top category there, 10 years of straight decline. 2024, we actually had property values go down, so the first time in 10 years, we had our levy rate go up. So you could see that in 2024, coming in at about 72 and a half cents per thousand. 2025, we have, we have returned to property valuations going up. So you see a decrease to the levy rate. So our projected levy rate for the general levy is just over 70 cents per thousand. The same, same thing is happening with our voter-approved bond. So again, we have a decrease. We're about 2.7 cents, 2.8 cents per thousand projected for next year, for a total levy rate of just under 73 cents for next year. Also, to put some perspective into property tax and to? Also, to put some perspective into property tax and to really kind of look back, this goes back about fifteen years, back to two thousand and nine. A pretty, pretty dramatic change over the years. We had a levy rate of about a dollar ninety cents in two thousand and ten. Two thousand and ten, we made the decision to go to the voters to be annexed into Fire District Three. Part of that annexation, the city agreed to decrease its levy. That way, there wasn't a double taxation scenario with our, our taxpayers here in both the district and the city. So we voluntarily reduced property taxes by about four point seven million dollars. That's why you see that big drop from two thousand and ten to two thousand and eleven. We had four years of property declining values from two thousand and eleven through fourteen. Of course, that came, you know, that was part of the Great Recession and the very slow recovery. And you could clearly see the ten years of property valuation going up from two thousand and thirteen to twenty-three, and you could see where we're at here today. So quite a difference in a fifteen-year period in terms of our, our levy rate. Here is a comparison of this year's taxes, property taxes compared to what we are proposing for two thousand and twenty-five. To kind of walk you through the calculation, we're using a, an average home value in two thousand and twenty-five of five hundred thousand dollars. I had to basically go backwards in terms of valuation to get to this year's valuation. So overall, Lacey values are increasing by about six point two percent. So in two thousand and twenty-four, we have a house valued at four hundred and seventy-one thousand. We add the six point two percent, we arrive at five hundred thousand. So you could see this year, a, a home, the same home paid property taxes of about three hundred and fifty-six dollars for the year. We are projecting the same home would, will pay about three hundred and sixty-five dollars in two thousand and twenty-five. I'm looking at some of our other sources of revenues for the general fund, property, or sales tax. This is quite easily our largest single source of revenues for the general fund. Sales tax projection for next year in total is about nineteen point three million. This is a seven hundred and ninety-six thousand dollar increase. But I do need to point out, the majority of this increase is from our new public safety tax. This was our voter-approved tax, county-wide tax that went into effect in April. Collections or receipts didn't actually occur until June. So that increase is really an illustration of the full year collection of that tax, not necessarily seeing a trend in sales taxes going up. In fact, really, the projection, we're really holding steady for existing sales tax. We've had five months of straight decline, so we are keeping a very close eye on that. But basically, sales tax, we're projecting no growth for next year. Just a couple of points that, you know, kind of help illustrate why we are projecting no increase. If you look at the last twelve months of sales tax, the last sales tax that we have data for is August of two thousand and twenty-four. So for the last twelve months, retail trade has only grown at two-tenths of a percent. Construction growth is four percent over that same period. But if you look year-to-date, so what's included in that twelve months, of course, is last year's holiday season shopping. So if you just look from January through August, a little bit different picture. Retail trade actually declined three point two percent over that eight-month period. Construction is down fourteen point five percent over that same period. So that's really what's driving next year's projection, really holding steady for sales tax. I want to talk about utility tax as well, another significant source of revenue for the general fund. An overall increase of about three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. A pretty, pretty diverse change throughout the different categories. Electricity, we're projecting an increase of about a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Natural gas, a decrease of about two hundred and eighty-four thousand. A lot of this, I can't explain in detail, but there was a change to the tax credits for the calculation on natural gas. I think this was a state-level type calculation. I can't really speak to it much more than that, but the cities have collectively noticed this change in natural gas, and there's been discussion, and that is the explanation at this point, but we're actually not sure. We're still doing a little more research as to why that is. We also had a more mild winter this year, so I think there's a couple of factors that are impacting natural gas. Telephone utility tax, a slight increase, sixty-three thousand. The most significant increase is coming from our city-owned utilities. Basically, we have growth that's in that as well as our known increases for two thousand and twenty-five. So about a four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar increase in city-owned utilities. Other taxes, we have BNO tax. We have an increase of about a hundred and ninety-four thousand projected for next year. The tax base for BNO taxes is very similar to sales tax, but one major difference is the service industry is taxed in BNO tax. For the most part, services are not taxed in sales tax. You know, I think we are really seeing kind of a continuation in the recovery from the pandemic. I think that's the real difference in what we're seeing in the trends for BNO tax. Admissions tax, we are projecting a thirty thousand dollar increase, so a total annual collections of admissions tax of a hundred and fifty thousand. This is really one of the one areas that has not recovered since the pandemic, and I think this really is an illustration of the change in how people are receiving their entertainment. I think streaming is becoming a lot more popular. And if you kind of look at the, the timeline in terms of when you could see a movie at home versus in the theater, the time is very short now. So I think that has really changed the behavior of how they're consuming that entertainment.
So Troy, that being the one difference with a streaming service where being able to buy a movie at home, you do have to pay sales tax on that. So have you seen that in, in those categories, that, that number go quite a bit up as?
It has. That is, that is one area in sales tax that we continue to see growth is, we'll just call a broad category of internet, whether it be internet sales, because of course, those sales are sourced to where they're delivered. So any delivery that comes into Lacey is taxed in Lacey. But yeah, we are seeing an, an increase in all of those types of services. Think about a purchase of an, an app for your phone. That is sourced here to Lacey as well. So there are many subscription services. It's the same, falls in the same category. So thankfully, those are sourced here in Lacey, and we have seen an increase there. But it hasn't, hasn't been enough unfortunately to
Offset this.
Overcome the, yeah, the offset to the decrease we're seeing in brick and mortar. Gambling taxes, we are projecting no change. So gambling taxes, that includes card room, pull tabs, bingo, raffles. So those all are examples of gambling tax. Although we're not projecting an increase there, this is an area that is, is actually come out of COVID stronger than, than before. So this is actually an increase compared to historic levels of gambling tax collections.
Can I, can I ask a question real quick?
Of course.
So let's say, for example, I buy an app on my phone, right? And my phone address is still my address in Texas because I just PCS'd here. Is, is this community in Texas receiving those?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, so, so let's say, for example, I, I do buy an app on my phone and that app is taxed, right? And the address in my phone still has my previous address, right? So, so I'm just, as, as you guys, as we, as we talk about this, I'm like, I'm trying to think of solutions or how we can, you know, you know, to kind of look at the situation and, and where we're, you know, how we can fill the holes is kind of where my mind works. So, so when, when, when you buy something, you know, on a digital device, and it sources it back to your address in your phone, your address at your, it sources it, I don't understand how it sources it back, and I guess.
Sure, sure, that is a
Not expecting you to know that, that answer, but.
Yeah, that's a great question. There has been a lot of discussion about that very thing. And what's really critical there too is there is a national or a federal prohibition about taxing the internet. So that is something we are not allowed to tax, and there's a, there's been a big shift in terms of telephone utility tax because of that. If you think about, you know, a, a smartphone, I think, I think talking, using voice, the voice services is probably the least common way phones are used now, so that's definitely an issue. But there is a very complex answer to your question, but yes, it is primarily addressed, the billing address. There's been a lot of discussion because of utility tax, and utility tax is different across the nation. It's across, it's different between cities and counties and the state. So there's a lot of revenue at stake when it comes to smartphones and where that service is actually consumed. But, so there is a, at least in Washington State, there are rules that have been established by the Department of Revenue that, you know, first, that you rely on the companies to try to source that to where the service actually took place. If that's not available, if that's not accurate because of locations of antennas, as an example, it's, you know, you use triangulation and lots of science and engineering that I don't quite understand, but that's not always completely accurate. So unfortunately, it does fall in a lot of cases on that billing address. And we do rely on the consumer to change their addresses timely. So I know that doesn't directly answer your question, and it's, it's kind of a fluid situation, but yeah, that is something that is very much on the minds of many jurisdictions across the nation.
Okay.
So looking at fees and other revenues, service fees, we have an increase projected for next year of two point two million. The vast majority of this is coming from internal service fees. The first being, but just kind of a general category of inter-fund service charges of an increase of one point six million. This is primarily related to engineering and water resources. So most of our engineers are employed by the general fund, but the services they provide benefit the utilities, the transportation funds. So we actually charge those funds for those services, so that's why you're seeing that increase. We also have a six hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase to indirect cost reimbursements. This is very similar to the inter-fund service charges, but this, these costs represent administrative overhead costs that we are recovering from our three utilities. So administrative costs, of course, include the council's city manager's office, HR, finance. So there's a recognition that those, those departments actually benefit the utilities, so that basically represents charges for those services that are provided. Do you want to talk about interest income? So this is a, an area that we are projecting a three hundred and forty-three thousand dollar decrease. Total general fund projection is just over one point three million dollars. The main reason for the decrease was actually two main reasons. One, we are expecting rates to continue to decrease throughout two thousand and twenty-five. We'll get a better indication, actually, I think at the end of this week, the Federal Reserve will be making a decision on the next rate action. I think we are expecting a, a decrease to, to overnight rates. So we are expecting, yeah, and expecting rates to continue to come down through the end of two thousand and twenty-four into two thousand and twenty-five. At the same time, we have about a twenty percent decrease to our, our principal in the general fund. So of course, you heard me earlier, talk about the reserves that we're using for the police station. So we had about twenty million or so go out of the general fund into that building fund. So we have a smaller base to earn interest revenue on as well as lower interest rates. Do you want to talk about all other revenues? This is where the majority of that nineteen million dollar decrease comes from. Overall, other revenues are decreasing twenty-three point two million next year. Again, a lot of that is coming from the use of reserves of the police station. So we have a, a decrease of use of reserves of about twenty-two million. Seventeen point five billion of that was directly for the construction of the new police station and the training facility. We also have about one point four million dollars in less reserves related to our law enforcement function. This year, we used about four hundred, four hundred and seventy-five thousand for our law enforcement record management system upgrade, which is actually going to occur next year, but that's kind of a different discussion, but that was in the budget. We also moved some reserves as part of the public safety fund for succession planning and the mobile outreach team. So all those three add up to about a one point four million dollar use of reserves this year that aren't going to occur next year. We also have transfers in. Those are very much related to the previous bullet. We did have transfers in of about five hundred and forty-six thousand into that new public safety fund for that succession planning and mobile outreach team. We also have included in this category of about seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars of Department of Commerce grants. These grants are, all, all three of the grants are being administered by our community, Community and Economic Development Department. We have a climate action grant, a middle housing grant, and a home electrification grant that are being reseeded this year. So those, all these will not occur again in two thousand and twenty-five. I do want to spend a little time on our reserves and use of reserves. We are using a significant amount of reserves next year, about eleven point seven million in total for the general fund. Here you could see listed the reserves that are being used just in the current expense fund, about ten point six million dollars next year. I do kind of want to walk you through the color codes you see here on the screen. The reserves that we are showing, they're in red text. These are reserves that we are using for various projects next year. But these are reserves that are currently, have been committed by this council for different uses, but we do want to ask you later this year, when we have our reserve discussion, to repurpose these. So those two being the police succession planning and the mobile outreach team. Both of these are now fully funded by the new public safety tax, so these are, reserves are no longer used. So we want to repurpose those in two thousand and twenty-five for investments in our social services initiatives as well as some parks projects, as well as equipment replacement. So we will be coming back before the council later this month and in December to actually have that discussion and have action by the council. The items that are highlighted in yellow, those are what I would consider reserves that we're using for ongoing operations and maintenance-type services. So in total, that's about three point one million dollars you're seeing here on screen. So you, of course, have the, the deficit, the operating deficit there at the, the last item of just under two point five million. We also have the rapid response team that is being funded by reserves. We have a lease payment or, for our, our body worn and fleet cameras of about two hundred and ten thousand. And energy conservation, we just have those initiatives that are being funded by reserves of two hundred thousand. So those are, those are areas that I think are ongoing. I think we, you know, I think those are just going to be ongoing expenses.
I had a quick question. Oh, you can go first.
Just a quick one, Troy. The budget policy implementation. I thought that number was reduced. Okay, so that's not finally.
That's not a final number?
Yep.
And then the, um, the body worn fleet cameras, I don't know how it escaped me that that was a lease, but is that going to be like something that we're, is that, is that, is that amount just going to be forever?
Well, it's going to run through the lease period, and we have a number of different agreements. You know, as we add a, a police cruiser as an example, that creates another camera, that creates another lease. But they're right around five years, and like I said, it's kind of broken up into different phases. But certainly for the long term, it's a multi-year payment that we're going to have to make. So, you know, again, I think that, certainly in the short term, you know, the three- to four-year period, we're going to continue to see that. Okay, well, these are the remaining uses of general fund reserves. You see that in community buildings, the street fund, as well as capital equipment. You see that in community buildings, the street fund, as well as capital equipment. So that rounds out your 11.7 million dollars in use of reserves for 2025. The same color coding for the, the reserve there in red, that is something we would like the council to consider later to repurpose for equipment replacement. It's currently for telephone repair, telephone system replacement. So I do want to circle back to the current expense reserves. I have a bit of good news. So the, the budget policy implementation reserve there of just under 2.5 million dollars. I think that number is actually closer to 1.8 million dollars, and I'll explain why. First, as I was reviewing this list, I noticed that the strategic investment fund there highlighted in yellow was only 200,000. We actually have 500,000 in the budget, or 700,000 in the budget for that. So I think it's perfectly appropriate that we fully fund the $700,000 that we have in the budget using strategic investment program reserves. To give you a reminder of what's in that 700,000, we have 200,000 for support for the maker space and we have 500,000 as a holding place. You'll probably remember the city manager kind of walked you through our plan for the, how to address the deficit in 2025. The first step in that will be to develop and implement a strategic economic development plan. So we do have a holding place of 500,000 for that plan in 2025. So really what I see happening there, or what I'm suggesting, is that we lower the amount of budget policy implementation by 500,000 and use the full 700,000 of strategic investment reserves. The other piece that I want to bring before the council is, it was brought to my attention that we had included the mobile outreach team budget of 200 and roughly 214,000 twice in the budget. So we have it in the new public safety fund, but where we failed to remove that from social services. So it is double budgeted. So I'd like to lower the budget, which will again, lower the need for the use of the budget policy implementation. So it will be about 1.75 million dollars in that budget policy reserve. So it makes our, our deficit a little bit smaller, it makes our challenge next year a little bit easier. So, you know, looking for a direction for council to go ahead and do that. And we'll make that adjustment and bring all that together back at our next hearing. So you could see the numbers after that change.
So since you're still talking about reserves, how much reserves do we have left over in our, our general fund, not counting what we're seeing here in the budget, right in this one-time use of those reserves? I know we're, we going through a chunk of them with the police station, but we still have another, what, 20?
I think it's closer to 40 million. Putting me on the spot a little bit. I haven't done that work yet in advance of that discussion, but so, yeah, when you take the 11 million down from 40, so we're going to be somewhere in that 30 million range. You know, we do need to have two months of operating reserve in all of our funds. That's right around 11 or 12 million. Again, I haven't done those calculations yet either, but so, yeah, we'll bring all that back to this council. Actually, I just put that on the agenda tracker for the last work session of this month. So we'll have that full report, we'll have the full report of the condition or the cash position of all of our funds. He could see that and we'll of course make recommendations and have that discussion with the council on how they want to designate reserves for this year.
Great. Councilor Stedman?
Thank you, Mayor. Hey Troy, you're going to cover the gambling tax, right? And later on in this presentation?
I had a slide earlier, so we're projecting no increase for gambling tax in 2025. It's about 540,000 for the year. But did you have a?
We're still, we, we're still at the reduced rate, right? From the historical amount, from what it's 12 to 8, right, percent?
For card rooms, I think is what you're referring to. Historically, we're at 10% and six, seven, eight years ago, we lowered that to 7.5%. So we are still at that 7.5%.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that, you know, I think we should raise it back up because we lowered it to help with getting out of COVID. And, you know, it was also locally owned, which it's no longer anymore. But I mean, if we're going to raise it, I think now's the time. It's, we lowered it to help them out, but it's, it's been quite a while they've been.
That was, yeah, that was back in 2014, 13, 14, something like that. And, and, and they came, they came to us specifically because they were being hit by the recession and they obviously pulled out of the recession. I think it's worth a conversation to have, see what, I mean, what that number, I would like to have some information about what other cities are charging and have a comparison again. So just to make sure that if we're going to make a decision on that, we are, you know, close to what other jurisdictions are, are charging.
I would just add that I think, I agree, we should have the conversation. I think it needs to be a little bit broader conversation.
Sure.
In the fact that, you know, we have for a long time had one card room and by our, by, you know, council action, I think we need to look, I think that should be really looked at as well.
I agree. I've been talking about that for a while.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that will become back in probably in January to have a conversation about all those different revenue sources and where to be strategic, because it's more than just the gambling tax, it could be considerations by council. And also part of that conversation would, it will be setting up as, or the first stage of that would be what Troy had mentioned regarding the economic investment package that we finalized in sometime in January as well. So be a holistic conversation about what we can look at for revenue options.
Thanks.
And Mayor, one, one last question?
Sure.
So back in 2000, say 10, it was what, bringing in close to a half a million or 400,000? What, I, what is it today? Is it about the 300,000?
No, it's probably closer to 500,000 for the card room. It was probably less than 400,000 15 years ago, but I'd have to look and we, obviously we could bring all that information before the council.
Sounds good.
Well, and, you know, we staged it down, so it wasn't a, we weren't hit very hard. So we could stage it back up to where they're not very, hit very hard even. It goes both ways.
Sure. Yeah, we did a three-year phase in, if I recall.
Yep, we did.
Okay, just some closing comments on the general fund. Just more outlook and some of the considerations that went into these projections. I already mentioned this, we have our last, most five recent months of sales tax have all been declines. Through October, our, our building permit activity is, is down about 381,000 year-to-date. Plan check fees are down about 318,000. These are really just kind of indicators of what might be coming our way in terms of development. Development has a positive impact on, you know, sales tax, one-time sales tax on that construction, as well as increase to future property tax and utility tax. So we're keeping a close eye on that. Lower interest rates, as I mentioned earlier, we are expecting we will be in an environment of lower interest rates for the next 18 months or so. Also, we're going to have a lower principal amount in which to earn those interest earnings. And then we talked about the budget deficit. Of course, it looks like that's going to be about 1.75 million versus this 2.5 million dollar number, but we are indeed going to balance this budget on using reserves for those operating costs. Real quickly, want to talk about transportation revenues, transportation benefit district. This is of course, the voter-approved 0.2% sales tax dedicated to preserving our streets and sidewalk system. Our projection for next year is almost 3.8 million dollars. So we're certainly putting that money to good use in preserving our, our streets and sidewalks. Motor vehicle fuel tax is just about 1.1 million dollars for next year. There's really no change here. It's about a $10,000 increase for Lacey. What's really interesting here is our population is actually growing faster than most cities in the state. And this is something that is distributed to cities on a per capita basis. So, you know, logic would say we would have increasing fuel tax, but I really think this is, you know, the impact of electric vehicles. Vehicles are just getting better gas mileage and fuel tax, of course, is levied, levied on a per gallon basis and not the price of gas. So overall, I think Washington State is using less fuel. Real estate excise tax, we talked a bit about this at our, when we presented revenues before the council, as well as the workshop, but we, this budget does authorize a new capital project revenue fund. We will begin to receipt real estate excise tax into this fund. It will just allow us to have a better accountability of, of the, this restricted fund. And, you know, of course, we are dedicating somewhere around half of the, the annual projections for real estate excise tax for the debt that we're going to issue for the police station. And then the council will be able to direct where these funds are going to go towards in terms of capital investments. We don't really foresee a change in that, you know, the, these have been historically reseeded into our transportation department for the improvement of, of roads. So of course, we can certainly take council's direction in the future, so.
How's, how's REIT looking this year?
It's slightly above the 2.5 million dollar projection. I think we're going, as, I haven't looked at October yet, but through September, somewhere around 2.7 million, we had a strong September. But it was tracking right along at 2.5 million all year until September, so.
Well, and with interest rates going down next year, it's probably going to help our, our REIT number too.
You know, a lot of speculation about that, whether that's actually going to heat up the housing market and, because we still have a supply issue, but hopefully that will be the case. I want to remind the council, we did adopt multi-year utility rates, which did include 2025. So the water rate increase is 5.2%. Wastewater is 9.5%, stormwater 4.5%. The lot board didn't approve a 3% increase for next year. So no action needed on these for 2025, but of course, want to remind the council and the public of those increases. Getting close to the end, our next steps will be November 19th, where we'll ask the council to consider two actions to set the property tax levy for next year. The first will be a resolution that will authorize the 1% increase. As a reminder, the inflation factor for property tax next year is 2.5%. The state law limits property tax growth to 1% or this inflation factor, whichever is lower. It is indeed higher than 1%, so we are building in 1% for next year. And then the actual property tax levy itself, which will establish both the general levy of about 9.3 million, as well as the bond levy, which is 362,000 for next year. Again, you could see the projected levy rate for 2025.
Troy, when, when is the bond, the one that remaining bond paid off? Is that '05 or '06?
We'll make our final payment in 2026, December 2026. So two more years of that levy.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll turn this back over to the council for any questions you may have, any discussion or any guidance, and of course, to take input from the public, if any.
Any questions first from the council? I will open up to the public. There's a public, we had no one signed up, but anyone from the public? Okay. Well, it is 5 o'clock and with that, I'm going to close this revenue hearing. So next up on our agenda is resolutions. Turn it back over for the adoption of the resolution for the small works roster update. That's Ashley.
Good evening. I'm Ashley Smith, the City Engineering Design Manager. My presentation will be brief. I'm here just to request council adopt Resolution 1158 to capture changes to public works procurement processes resulting from Senate Bill 5268. Senate Bill 5268 directed changes to RCWs, in particular, removing some that were specific to small works processes and replacing them with others. Council may recall, we were last year discussing this topic on the state in 2020, in which we adopted Resolution 1096 to just speak to the RCW numbers for those processes, which have now changed. So this resolution will capture those. In addition, it reestablishes the allowable use of the small works roster processes and MRSC statewide rosters. If you're unfamiliar with small works roster bidding, it's a simpler, simpler, excuse me, process for projects that are underneath $350,000. It reduces bidding costs by eliminating the need for published advertisement in the newspaper. And it makes it easier for contractors to bid on that pool as they're solicited directly by opting in to participate on a roster and getting invited specifically for projects that are put out by the public works department. The small works and consultant roster that the City of Lacey has used since 2009 is hosted by MRSC. This roster is a pre-established list of contractors that are licensed in Washington, which is now the official statewide roster for Washington also. And in additional, in addition, MRSC maintains the list of publicly available, the publicly available list, excuse me, of awarded contracts for small works that we are required to publish by law in lieu of the city having to publish that on our website moving forward. A couple of changes that I'll just go over briefly as a result of that Senate bill. The limited public works process is no longer allowed at all. That was applicable to projects under $50,000 and gave us some provisions to waive things like retainage and bid bonds. There was an option to only invite five bidders between 50 and 250,000, which is now no longer allowed also. In replacement for that, all, all contractors on a project-specific roster must be included on that invitation moving forward. And then to replace that limited public works process, there's now an option called direct contracting for small works. There are a significant amount of additional requirements that would apply if we were to use that option, but it's a new one that's available. I'm just going to briefly touch on small works direct contracting. A few of those requirements, as mentioned, are implementation of a business utilization plan by the City of Lacey prior to use of that process at all. And that would highlight how the city intends to award projects to small businesses and those that are owned by minorities, women and veterans, and goals to meet them. It also requires a rotation policy for how we're going to selectively reach out to independent contractors. But I will say that city policy is to competitively bid projects whenever practical, so this would be a limited use option. The role, the rule of six that's listed there generally says if there are six or more contractors on a project-specific roster that apply, that that business utilization plan would apply to, either small, minority, women or veteran owned, then you have to contract directly with that business first. And then if there are, if your project-specific roster has five or less of those applicable contractors, you don't necessarily have to utilize that option. So again, there's an extensive list of requirements to use that process moving forward that would be outlined in city policy, but that's a new option that is allowable under the RCW. If that'll open up to any additional questions.
So do you think that?
I would move to adopt Resolution 1158, updating the city's small works roster process consistent with Senate Bill 5268.
Second? It's been moved and seconded? Discussion? So what's, do you think the real life result of this is going to be? What's going to be different? What do you think is going to be the main difference going forward under these new rules?
The biggest, I will say that elimination of limited public works was a rarely-used option, if at all. More often, this, the city standard practice has been to invite all contractors on that category of work and open it up competitively to the law. contractors on that category of work and open it up competitively to the lowest bidder. The changes that this would warrant are more specific to reaching out to those small businesses and disadvantaged businesses on all projects that are small works applicable.
So that's really the main difference, is that under 150,000 will be specifically reaching out to some of these smaller minority-owned and women-owned businesses?
Optionally.
Optionally?
Yes.
Yes.
The preferred method is the standard small works procurement method, which is to invite all contractors on that project-specific roster.
Okay. Any other discussion? And it's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 1158, the small works roster update. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Thank you. So next up, under the mayor's report, I have a couple. First is an update to the Human Services Work Group. I would move that we will appoint Angelina Goldwell to that Human Services Work Group.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? And that motion unanimously carries. We've appointed Angelina to the Human Services Work Group. And the next up is reappointment to Wendy Goodwin. I move that we reappoint Wendy Goodwin to the Parks Culture and Recreation Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? And that most, motion also unanimously carries. And I, just before we get into the city manager's report, I just wanted to say that it's been a busy week for me this last week. There's been a lot kinda going on. The city manager and myself went up to the Change of Command Ceremony for Joint Base Lewis, Joint Base Lewis McCord for the first, wait, it was for the...
Change of Command?
Yeah, Change of Command Ceremony was for...
The Base Command.
The Base Command. And so that was, that was really nice to go up there, and it was, it was very well-attended. Also have done some, some new business openings, and it's just been really sort of a, a busy week. But I just want to also remark that, you know, it is 5 o'clock, and this is, as we know, the day to go and vote. And so if for some reason you are listening to us now and you haven't voted, please go out and do that before 8 o'clock. And so that is just my two cents. I will go on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. And just a quick clarification, it was Change of Command at First Corps.
First Corps, yeah.
So.
I knew that didn't sound right.
I have a couple of items on the city manager's report, two agenda items, and then also a couple informational items. But first, I wanna turn it over to our Chief Motta to give an overview of some proposed amendments to our Massage and Reflexology Services ordinance under LMC 5.38. Chief?
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Today, we're in front of you to have an information item for Chapter 5.38, admitting and updating the Massage Reflexology Business Ordinance. And no PowerPoint today, so just a verbal report. There, so there are recognized health and wellness benefits to Massage and Reflexology Services, which are provided by trained practitioners who are both certified and licensed. Massage and Reflexology businesses in the City of Lacey serve a legitimate and valuable beneficial purpose to our community. Unfortunately, some businesses that portray themselves as legitimate Massage and Reflexology businesses actually employ unlicensed and uncertified persons who provide these services who failed to follow state health and licensing requirements and do not have the proper training or certifications required to obtain state licensure and certification. In addition, businesses of this type often employ, that employ unlicensed and uncertified persons often provide massage and reflexology services that can be used to facilitate the commission of various criminal acts, including but not limited to prostitution, human trafficking, money laundering, et cetera. So businesses that permit unlicensed and uncertified persons perform massage and reflexology services or permit, or permit the commission of unlawful acts undermine the business and reputation of legitimate licensed businesses and practitioners and present a threat to our public safety, our public health, and our welfare. The proposed amendments to Lacey Usable Code 5.3 are intended to prevent an individual business from engaging in the practice of providing unlicensed massage and reflexology, deter criminal activity, and support the legitimate delivery of these services by licensed massage and practitioners and reflexologists. Over the past year, the Lacey Police Department received numerous complaints and information from community members and property owners referencing suspicious activity at various massage and reflexology businesses in our city. Community members have reported unconventional tipping requirements, female massage practitioners dressed in lingerie, massage and reflexology businesses being utilized to house their employees, female customers being denied services at some of these establishments, and general concern of prostitution and human trafficking occurring. In January, we conducted an investigation with Lacey Fire Code inspectors at a few massage and reflexology businesses located in Lacey. The officers observed non-permitted sleeping quarters and a female employee dressed in lingerie who purported to be on duty and actively employed. Officers conducted online research of massage and reflexology businesses in Lacey. Our investigation revealed that at least seven locations appear to be associated with potential prostitution and human trafficking. These businesses have explicit advertisement on websites for escort, erotic massages, and other euphemisms for prostitution. Businesses have phone numbers with non-local area codes, and these phone numbers are associated with online prostitution services. Several of the businesses have online reviews of the services provided by female employees. The reviews posted by the customers are graphic and sexual in nature. The ages of all female employees described in the online interviews is unclear, but appear to vary. Undercover, undercover operations have support that, that these illegitimate massage and reflexology businesses may in fact involve minors. In February of this year, officers met with local law enforcement agency that also identified similar issues in their own community. This agency identified 21 legitimate massage and reflexology businesses in their jurisdiction, sorry, illegitimate massage and reflexology businesses in their jurisdiction after conducting prostitution operations and drafting a similar ordinance as, as thus we're asking you to do today. That city has no longer any illegitimate massage and reflexology businesses. So the agency supports our belief that there are suspicious activity occurring in some of our massage located in reflexology businesses. By adopting this municipal code, we will provide the city and police department with the tools to ensure our businesses are operating properly and with transparency. The proposed municipal code will not deter or prevent crim, will not only deter and prevent criminal behavior in Lacey, but will legitimize the actual businesses that are compliant with the updated municipal code and Health Department certifications. Most importantly, it'll protect potential, potential victims from prostitution, sexual exploitation, and human trafficking. So tonight, we're not asking for any action. That'll be done at a later meeting in this month, and they will be given options at that time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
And I just.
Thank you for updating this. As, as someone who had an office next to one, one of these services, I could tell you that I was very concerned about what was happening next, next door to my, my business office. And so I'm, I'm, I appreciate the, please work on this, and I look forward to hopefully updating this municipal code as soon as we possibly can.
So I appreciate the work with the, with the city attorney's office and with staff on this. I've been investigating these type of businesses most of my career. They're often just to cover for retail, the illegitments, illegitimate operations are often covered for retail for just organized, organized crime, prostitution, money laundering, human trafficking, and we do not want that to get a foothold in our city. So thank you.
So this will be scheduled at a upcoming council member, I believe, November 19th for, for an action on the ordinance. The ordinance itself has really gone through and, and updated the definitions sections and made requirements related to licensing and having those licenses in, present and visible off the wall or within the facilities, and also making the responsibility of the owner or manager to ensure that everybody is licensed and accordance with state Department of Health regulations. So.
Is there a reason you don't want action on it tonight?
Well, we would wanted to, this is coming up new. We wanna at least get the council aware that this is coming.
Okay.
And have any questions or conversations about the proposed ordinance that we were queued up to have it set up for final action on November 19th.
It seemed like there weren't any charges filed based off the findings, but my question would be at what point would there be action taken?
Once we have the teeth to actually enforce the ordinance, because right now, our current ordinance does not lend us that opportunity in most cases.
And what, what type of activity would need to be found for there actually, to actually shut these places down?
If they're using unlicensed personnel that don't have the proper certifications, that would help provide the basis towards that eventual closure. I mean, it would be a due process, of course. There's a hearing examiner process that would allow us to deduct that process. Obviously, criminal activity would lend to support of that case to close down the business, but it's not, it's not a de facto operation. There's due process involved.
Go ahead.
Just wanna make sure, does this give you everything you need to be able to?
The proposed changes would do that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And is, at that point, are you gonna go back to the seven places that you have, you know, looked at, who you feel like aren't meeting, wouldn't meet, meet the standard? And what's, what'd be the next step for Lacey?
We will ensure that any massage or reflexology business located in the City of Lacey follows all guidelines and municipal codes.
This, this language also not only help out law enforcement, but also business licensing, ensuring that they have the proper certification, demonstrating that they have that to open up the business, and then also, you know, going in for inspections and those type of things, make sure that they have those available. If they don't have those, then they'll go down a path of, they'll not be able to operate unless they have that certifications and licensing from the state.
Just real quick. So Chief, look, a few years ago, we discussed the fact that like, you know, we didn't really have the manpower and resources to, to really do investigative work and, and to really be able to see the types of things that are not patrol-related, not, you know, just patrol cop stuff. And, and now you've actually, is this your first, like, kind of investigation that you've done that has led to, you know what I mean? Because you remember when we had that conversation, you were like, we just don't have it, but now we're staffed, and, and, and we've, we've kind of found the time and the resources to, is this, is this gonna continue?
So if you ask the police, you know, Chief of Police and Sheriff, what keep you up at night? It's the crime that's happening that you don't catch on a radio call or on a traffic stop, right? And that's what we're really talking about today. It's what can hide under the cover of legitimacy that you don't normally get to investigate unless you have these type of tools. Now that we have proper staffing, we can go out and do these types of investigations. We need the tools to do that. But yeah, this is definitely the, one of the priorities I, I looked at beginning of the year was human trafficking. And how can we effectively combat human trafficking? One is education of our officers. We've been doing that through our training, right? Now we have to apply those tools and effective operations to do that wherever it's occurring. So this is one of the, one of the mechanisms we can do that through this type of ordinance.
So, and I'm glad you brought up trafficking, because it's one of those areas where, you know, it's, it takes a lot of coordination in terms of jurisdictions, state patrol, neighboring cities. Is that, is that something that you see will, will be able to, to make that connective tissue in the near future?
Yes. The short answer is yes. I can tell you that when I do these type of, these type of operations, I literally followed the criminal organization from when the folks were trafficked into the country via airport to when they were taken via a taxi service by their, their own people to a location where they were housed, and then they were taken to various locations throughout the city where these operations happened, both in and out of my current, my jurisdiction where I was working at the time. That's the type of operation we'll do, a, from beginning to end investigation, wherever it goes.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Steben, do you have anything?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
I just have one clarifying.
Go ahead.
I guess I did. Good, good job, Chief.
Thanks.
Everybody, all the staff members.
Just for, for clarification, so I understand, would it be law enforcement that's going in to look for these licenses and permits, or would another organization like, like a health department going in and doing a food inspection? Who would be the initiating person to find out, oh, something's not right here?
It would be a combination of officers and code enforcement.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Council. Our next item is a, an action item. The council may recall, at a work session, we had an update and briefing on the Kewyo Park Phase 1A. As part of that conversation was the requirement for a certain percentage of the, the budget or the project amount to be dedicated to art, our program or our project. And the proposal was to look at the sign for Kewyo Park to satisfy that requirement. So I wanna turn it over to our Parks Culture and Recreation Director, Jen Burbidge, to give an overview of the sign and the formal request and answer any questions council has.
Thank you, Rick. Good evening, Mayor Ryder, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Before you this evening, like the city manager said, is a recommendation of Option 1 in your staff report to designate the Greg Kewyo Park Monument Sign as public art. The Phase 1A project of Greg Kewyo Park is, is subject to Ordinance 1022, which requires 1/4 of 1% of the estimate for city projects, except transportation and utility projects, over $500,000 to be allocated to public art. So this project is required to include $16,200 in either installed art, which this proposal would do, or transfer that amount into the city's art fund to install art elsewhere in the city. But here you see on the screen the monument sign rendering, and because of its scale and beauty, staff would like to propose that this monument sign is dedicated as public art. It fits with the public input that we received during the master plan process of a nature theme, and a main goal of the project is passive use of natural spaces and preservation. The monument sign will be located at the entrance of the park, highly visible from Carpenter Road, whether traveling north or south. And it's very different than the other city park monument signs. It's very unique and playfully nods to the surrounding nature with the park, with its use of leaf and salmon motif presented as water jetted cutouts in the main sign panel and in the large maple leaf side panels. These motifs highlight the character of the park and serve as a linking thread throughout all of this park's signage. And on that note, I'll show a different picture, oops, of the sign package here. So this is the sign package that highlights one of the Lacey Parks Culture and Recreation's branded colors, which is Oka. It's a warm golden rod that pops amongst the green trees and meadows of the park, and that's shown here in this next rendering. The, per the Lacey City Council policies and procedures, the council retains final authority on selection and placement of all art to be located on city-owned properties. Using art funds for the sign would satisfy the set aside requirement and in addition meets the city's adopted public art policy. So the monument sign accomplishes several of the public art policy objectives, creates a sense of community, identity and character, provides a pleasing living, working, and playing environment, enhances economic development and attracts visitors, provides sustainable maintenance and operation costs, and evokes a sense of fun. In addition, the sign reflects several of the public art policy ideas and themes. So one is natural beauty of the city as reflected in its trees and lakes, use of northwest themes, so you have the salmon and the trees there, and then park entry signs is actually called out as one of the themes in the, in the policy itself. So finally, the sign meets placement parameters by complementing or enhancing the following locations. And again, Lacey Parks Trails and publicly owned spaces are called out there. So thanks for your consideration and just happy to answer any questions you have about that.
I would move to designate Greg Kewyo Park Monument Sign as public art in accordance with City of Lacey Ordinance 1022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have a quick comment.
Go ahead.
Joe, I, I love your sign. It's, it's really pretty cool, and I like the colors, too. As someone who's trained in weapons, I see two swords sticking out toward the road. I think Councilman Reddunning sees it, too. And so I, I, you know, I like the ones that have the borders up above, and I'm wondering is, can we consider, you know, just for safety purposes, a border around the two protruding things that are facing a road that has a 50 mile an hour speed limit? Just.
Oh, so are you talking about fencing?
the leaves, which would, if somebody, if something came speeding towards it, it would hit a flat surface border.
The banner side, the wayfinding sides inside the park?
Yeah, the wayfinding sides inside the park actually have a squared off border around them, so the sharp parts of the leaves are not, well, and so, so I'm just looking at that.
How sharp is, is it, or is it just a...
Depends on how fast you're going.
Well, I guess it depends on...
One of, one of the things, we can take a look at that and safety design, I know that the, the question tonight though is, can it satisfy for public art?
Absolutely.
But in terms of the design of the sign, and make sure that it meets safety, you know, any type of safety concerns, we can still continue to look at that.
I think that's fair.
That's fair.
Is there any other discussion? Then it's been moved and seconded to designate this Greg Kewyo Park Monument Sign as public art in accordance with the City of Lacey Ordinance 1022. I'll implore that motion to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Now have a couple of informational updates, and I first want to invite Jeanette Seeler up, who's been our rec supervisor, but also does a lot of our event planning. And I'd like to give her the opportunity to present to council the plans for this year's Lacey Holiday Light Festival. That's going to occur, I believe it's December 2nd, the event, and it's going to be a little bit different than in past events, so Jeanette will get an opportunity to provide an overview of this.
All right, yeah, I'm here to, to share about a change to our tree lighting event. A brief history, lighting of the Christmas tree in Lacey began in 1996 at the Fred Meyer parking lot, with lighting up the tree there and Kamatchan Middle School's choir singing in hot cocoa. At some point prior to 2007, when I started here, I don't have the exact date on that, the old fashioned ceremony became the lighting of Hunnamer Park, with a brief ceremony, the choir, the arrival of Santa on the Santa mobile and the fire truck, and the flipping of the candy cane switch to light up the park. And each year, we've continued to add more and more lights, like the animated flying Santa, and continue with this format until celebrating Lacey's 50th anniversary with the lighted vehicle parade in 2016. The one-time commemorative parade was a hit and continued to lead off the holidays since then. Last year, after finding out we were losing our staging building along the route where the vehicles were getting ready, the church moved to another facility, so that wasn't going to be available. And after our wrap-up meeting in, after 2003, staff reviewed the impact of the parade from a public safety standpoint and an impact on city staff, and decided to create a new twist to this event. A festival to kick off the season and the lighting of Hunnamer Park, still with lighted vehicles to enjoy, only now folks could wander through the vehicles and see them up close for a longer period of time. On Monday, December 2nd, from 5:30 to 7:30, we'll enjoy the lighted stationary vehicles around the park, which will be presented by businesses, organizations and individuals. Plus, we'll have activity booths with crafts and games hosted by businesses and organizations, live music provided by River Ridge Marching Band, and more entertainment with Timberland High School Dance Group. Plus, holiday music and music videos shown on our giant screen. We'll have food vendors with both meals and snacks, and of course, Santa and Mrs. Claus will be there, hearing the kids' wish lists and posing for pictures, along with more holiday celebrities. At 6:00 PM, we'll have a brief ceremony with the flipping of the candy cane switch to light up the whole park, and then the event will continue with more fun surprises. The new Lacey Holiday Lights will require significantly less impact to police, streets, parks and inner-city transit, as we won't need to close the street and reroute the traffic. A real bonus is the celebrations is extended, and the community gets to enjoy the lights and the vehicle and the festivities for a longer period of time. The lighted vehicles are in the running for some major awards. If I can get this to turn, there we go. So I would like to invite the council, anybody that would like to help in the judging for that, for the different categories. And one thing we're adding this year that we couldn't do before with the parade is we're adding a people's choice. So everybody will get to vote on their favorite display. So that's going to be really exciting to get more community support. And we'd also like to invite the mayor, of course, to flip the candy cane switch and turn on the lights for the park. So I'm ready to answer any questions you may have.
Is there any questions? Are we, do we have time to push this out?
To the public, or is it already out there?
It's already out there.
Okay.
It's going, it's on our website. We're, we're still collecting applications for vehicles and for the activity booths, we're not, those are both free to do. Last year, we had 34 entries for our parade. Right now, we're at 29 between the vehicles and the activity booths. With, still, we'll take them through November 15th, as long as we have space. So, and it's also out on our social media.
Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. And one last item for informational updates related to our Lacey Museum. We had to do some shifting of how we dealt with some storage in City Hall for available space for office space, and out of that challenge came a nice opportunity. So I'm going to turn it over to Jen Burbidge to kind of give an update on where we are on the Lacey Museum and its new location.
All right, thank you. Good evening, good evening again, and yeah, we just wanted to let you know the museum is on the move. So as you know, space has always been a challenge for the museum, limiting the exhibits and the activities that can be hosted there. For example, we currently aren't able to accommodate school field trips, and that's something that we really want to be able to do, and the schools really want us to do, and provide that, you know, for the kiddos in the community. So, working with city manager, as he said, we were recently able to find a leased space just down Sixth Avenue from City Hall. The Lacey Museum will be moving to that location, and the Russell House, where the museum is currently located, will become a new research center. So you'll probably recognize this space, probably drive by it quite a bit, west of City Hall on Sixth, directly across the street from Office Depot. This will be a highly visible space for the Lacey Museum. The new Belltown Center location provides over 1,100 square feet for exhibits, programs, events, interactive exhibits and educational displays and other uses. This expanded facility will allow the museum to showcase items that can't, that cannot be currently displayed, and yes, the, the field trips. Here's a couple other photos of the site. It's Suite 101, and the move will give Lacey Museum more visibility, more foot traffic, more exposure to museum education programs and events, which is good for the community in general, of course, but also good for the new museum and cultural center project. So we can, you know, continue to build champions and partnerships, working to that, that project. So the existing museum location, or the Russell House, will become a dedicated research center where people can explore the museum library and archives, subject files, genealogy collections and more. So the current museum is going to close next Friday, November 8th, and we plan to reopen in the new location early next year. Both locations will have volunteer opportunities and space for retail sales. And while the move to the new location is much needed, it's only temporary, of course, our efforts to establish the Lacey Museum and Cultural Center next to the Lacey Depot in the Depot District will definitely continue. And, you know, at that point, with the new facility, of course, all of the components of the museum can be under one roof. So if anybody's watching from the public and wants to access more information about the museum, they can go to lacymuseum.org, but I am also happy to answer any questions you may have.
Can we afford updated signage?
We will be, yes, we'll be adding signage. Yes, absolutely.
We'll be limited signage with the windows and displays like that, of course, the center signage is going to be, it's, that's the, owned by the property owner and the common tenant, but...
Yeah, I was hoping that maybe that spot would...
We'll also be sending, you know, cross-referencing the facilities at both facilities to drive people back and forth, depending what their interest is.
Great.
That concludes my report.
Okay. Then we're on to boards, commissions and committee reports. I'm up first, but I do not have a report. Deputy Mayor?
Just one quick one. We had EDC retreat last week, and a couple items of note were some of the EDC goals, and, and one of those goals is, is to strengthen the relationship with the chamber and the county, so that, and the port, so that we're not all trying to do the same thing, or at least have some delineation, more delineation, so that we can kind of have better effort. So sharing the, the EDC impact stories, and I know I briefed on this last time, that I talked about the EDC, but, you know, in the EDC, we call the EDC, you know, the county's best kept secret, because of, of the numbers that it produces and the, you know, the dollar in for dollar out, money that it, that it generates. And so the EDC, you know, we talk about it as a workhorse, not a show pony, and, and one of the things that we talked about is, you know, it's okay to talk about your successes, because the EDC doesn't really do that. A lot of times, people use the program, they have no clue it's powered by the EDC, so they use the Apex Accelerator, they use the Women in Business Resources and so on and so forth, but we actually got a call from somebody saying, hey, you, you guys really need to look into this Apex thing that's happening, and had to tell that, those, those people that, well, yeah, we, we know about it a little bit because it's powered by the EDC, it came from here. So, so, you know, not talking about what you do in an age where, you know, people are taking selfies and pictures of their food, is, is one of those things that can, can get you less traction and less of what you're trying to do. And so, and then, of course, the other consideration is, do we have the staff to, to, you know, if we were to really say, hey, come to the EDC as much more than it's being said now, is there enough resources to, to really help that many more people, you know? And the EDC started out as, as a one and a half FTEs, and now it's 31 and a half FTEs over a 30-year period, so substantial growth for this EDC. And then, we also talked about private, private dollars, and there's, there's just not enough of them coming through the EDC. Everybody wants private dollars, of course they do, because they're, you know, less restrictive, and, but a lack of private dollars can cause you to miss out on a lot of different opportunities because there's oftentimes a match needed, and if you don't have the funds to match, you just don't get to do that. And so there's several things that have had to, we've had to say, you know, we can't do it because we can't, we don't have a match. And then as the, the Thurston, Salish, Pacific Economic Development District goes live next month, there will be a whole lot more federal dollars available for Thurston County and the surrounding counties to, to have access to. But again, without that private match, it's going to be a lot more difficult to, to take advantage of some of those federal opportunities. So, so there's, in, in that net of different options there, there's, there's, you know, in this retreat, we figured, you know, and, and found that there's, there's just a lot of work to be done, to, to kind of promote the EDC, to get more private dollars and to really be able to take advantage of, of, you know, the federal dollars and federal programs that we're unable to do right now because we just can't match the, the dollars for, for dollars in that situation. So those are becoming some of the top priorities of the EDC coming, moving forward. And of course, my top priorities are, you know, stopping dollars from leaving the county that we can stop from leaving the county. So there's so many different sectors of business that we just, you know, don't have, people leave the county to go spend their dollars somewhere else, because we, as a county, just don't have that yet, you know? And, and you can't really expect a county of, that's gone from 250 to 400,000 people in less than 10 years to have implemented, you know, to have stadiums and, and different venues where, where, you know, we can stop those dollars from leaving the county. But over these next couple of years, I'm really hoping to make some of those things happen, and, and see if we, there are some businesses that would be interested in coming to Thurston County that can plug some of those holes, so that we can have more dollars bounce around this county, instead of leaving to go to other counties for those types of services and goods. So that's, that's what's come out of this retreat. And that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Greenstein?
I do not have a report this evening.
Councilmember Stedman?
I also do not have a report, but I want to bring awareness, I mean, you guys know that we have the NLC conference next week, and I have ORCA meeting, so I don't recall who my alternate is, just off the top of my head, but I'll need someone to be there for me. But I have no report otherwise.
Okay, we'll see if we can figure that out. Councilmember Cox?
All righty, I have a couple of things here. The Thurston Climate Collaborative Executive Committee met on October the 28th. We heard a presentation by Stephanie Bishop from the Thurston Conservation District, and it was, it was an interesting take on how the district interfaces with the climate goals of the county. In terms of agriculture, reducing emissions from agricultural practices helps. There's a process called regenerative agriculture and practices that help to sequester carbon in the soil and, and nutrient testing program. The Conservation District has a podcast, for those interested, that talks about soil health and what's old is new again, hedgerows, and their findings are very, very helpful with this, and agroforestry. And they also are looking, working on forest health programs and prairie restoration. So if any of that's in interest, take a look at their website, I found it very interesting and, and refreshing to see how far the Conservation District has come in just a few short years from nearly falling apart to being, you know, very active and engaged now. We heard a presentation from Michael Cade and Jean Angel from the EDC, and they also presented about interactions and intersections between the EDC's work and the climate collaborative's work. And so a lot of what we were talking about showed Thurston County is like the fastest growing county by population. They expect over 18% growth in the next decade, which means we're going to need 50,000 housing units, and so the EDC is hoping to work with the climate collaborative on how we get there. We, we've had conversations in the past about a proposed program that would allow homeowners to get inspections about their property's home energy efficiency before it went on the market, and then that there would be a disclosure for buyers about the, the home's energy efficiency. There's been a lot of work since, since those reports were, were made. There's been five focus groups, they've been looking into what it would take to have regional consistency on something like that, and looking into how we could make this affordable. There would be exemptions for distressed sales, for example. There's going to be one more focus group, and then there's going to be open community review on a draft ordinance, which is still in the making. Lindsay Field, our representative to the tech team for the Climate Collaborative, is hoping to schedule a work session with us to kind of walk us through what the proposal is, what it means, how home sellers and buyers would be affected by this. Looking to do hearings in March and April, and if adopted, this program would start later in the year. So more to come on that. And then we also heard a, a report on Energize Thurston, the Switch Is On. This is a county campaign to make it faster, easier and cheaper to purchase and install energy-efficient all-electric heat pumps and water heaters. They're going to be doing a request for qualifications. The staff is going to introduce, evaluate the credentials of potential suppliers, and they hope to launch in February and run through June on that. So we'll see how far we can get with matching up people with energy-efficient appliances. Intercity Transit Authority met on October 16th. We conducted a public hearing on three planned changes to bus service, continuing to expand there. We had a couple of routine task orders, and we are going to be interviewing candidates for the Authority's Community Advisory Committee. There's open positions there, as well as appointing... There's open positions, positions there, as well as appointing a representative, a citizen representative to the Authority itself. So I think the Community Advisory Committee interviews will be on November 8th, and the interviews for the citizen representative will be on November 22nd. Those are the main highlights of that. Oh, there is one more thing. Intercity Transit did an employee engagement survey, survey earlier this year, and one of the pieces of feedback they got was, you know, there's interest in employees, they, they love working there, but they wanted to have more opportunities to, to grow within the organization and be promoted up. And so they're, the Human Resources Department developed a leadership academy for all levels of leadership at Intercity Transit, and this academy has just begun, and the purpose of it is to ensure that supervisors, managers and others have the tools and resources that they need. The first session gave leaders the opportunity to learn what their personal strength profiles are, including whether they lead from a promoting, supporting, analytical or deriving framework under both positive and adverse conditions. And the point is not to say any one of those is better than the others, it's to be able to identify how, how we function and how we interact with others and become better managers. So I thought, I found that very interesting. And then the Regional Housing Council met on October 23rd. At the top of the meeting, we heard from two people commenting about mold in rental And we also had a presentation later in the meeting on a proposed mold, mold program. Lacey and most other jurisdictions use what's known as the International Property Maintenance Code. It does not directly address mold in housing. The county doesn't have a policy added on all, and black mold is a known public health hazard. So the jurisdictions are being asked to, you know, look at what they have and considering updating their housing codes to incorporate measures in the National Healthy Housing Standard that addresses mold and moisture. Examples would be a drainage system that should direct water away from the structure itself. Mold and moisture damaged building materials must be cleaned, dried and repaired, and then under, the underlying cause of excessive dampness or moisture or moldy or earthy odor should be investigated and corrected. So if the jurisdictions agree to look into this further, a cross-jurisdictional group would be put together with staff from housing code enforcement, environmental, environmental health and others to actually look into code-related solutions. There would be a coordinating cross-jurisdiction education and outreach program, and they would be seeking new partnerships with financial institutions and others to help property owners or owners of rental housing pay for repairs. So more to come on that, and I think Lindsay will be coming to us with something. And then finally, we heard an update on the Franz Anderson Development. This is a low-income housing institute, a project to replace, what am I trying to say? To replace tiny homes there with permanent, permanent housing. They're going to be having to change the funding sources for, for that. There's a upcoming deadline for the ARPA funds, and so legal from the county and the cities are working on revising an inter-local agreement, which we would be part of, and that has to be completed by the end of the year. As for replacement funding, Lehi, which is the Low Income Housing Institute, is seeking a housing trust fund grant. So more to come on that, but it's definitely a hiccup in that project. Rick looks like he has something to say on that.
Related to the Franz Anderson Road ILA amendment proposal, that will come to the council next week at work session to go over the, the proposed amendments, and really it's just tying to the, the source of funds that the county and Tom are contributing. They previously identified ARPA funds, and they need to re-label that where that funding's coming from so they can use those ARPA funds elsewhere before they lose those dollars.
Cool. All right.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunning?
I do not have any reports.
Okay. Well, we've reached the end of our agenda. One of the things I realized over the weekend, which I wasn't aware of, was that Commander Max's last day was last Friday.
Uh-oh.
And obviously, he's been a part of, you, go ahead.
Actually, he'll be leaving in May. He's on leave right now.
Well, yeah, I know.
And we'll be having, I'm hoping to bring a proclamation to council.
Okay. I hope so, because when I saw that his maybe last day, I know he has back, I know he's, his official last day is not until, you know, in the future, but he has some vacations, some other stuff that's going on. I really hope we can celebrate him, and, you know, he's been such a fixture here in Lacey in the face of management of the police department for so long. I just would love to be able to, you know, shake his hand and, and thank him for all of his, all of his work.
Did you see those pictures that were posted? Of a young Mac?
Yeah, it's amazing. I mean, he's been here forever. He's, you know, he's been a fixture here forever, and I was like, please say we didn't lose our opportunity to, to thank him for everything he's done. And I know he doesn't want a big deal, but I mean, we need to be able to say thank you to Commander.
That is my desire. I'd like to, you know, he's been an employee here for over 35 years, and I'd like to have him recognized.
Absolutely.
By council and, and give him his due. So I'm, I'm going to propose to the city manager a proclamation for him, hopefully, and then we can give him his due and make him post for a picture or something.
Great, yeah, I hope so. And, you know, I just want to, you know, thank him for all of his years of service, and he's been, you know, amazing part of our, our community. Okay, with, with that, we have reached the end of our agenda, so without objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned, and as always, you keep it classy, Lacey.
Good night, everyone.